Staff and student highlights. I don't see anyone in the room, so was there someone signed up for today, Sarah? She looks frozen. I'm guessing that because it's a different night than it was originally scheduled for, that maybe whoever was signed up wasn't able to come, so we'll skip over that. And that will move us into finance, so we can discuss the budget.
Okay, so a lot has happened since last month in the budget. So let's start with the expense side. So the first item that I want to report is that at the last draft, we included vocational tuition to Stafford. And that amount has now been corrected. The amounts that we were given by Stafford were not correct. When we received the state file with all of those numbers, we realized that there was a variance between what the state provided and Stafford. And so that is resulting in an $80,000 increase in expense. So the FTE, we're billed up by, based on a six semester rolling average of FTEs, which is the number of students that are attending Stafford over the course of six semesters. So that number was off by, I think it was approximately four FTEs. So that's the first item. The second item, we have received the announced tuition from Rutland City, and they are looking at a 4.8% increase. We were looking at, we had budgeted a 3% increase in the last budget, in the last draft. So their announced tuition is $22,000 compared to the $21,630 that we had in the last draft. And that's resulting in a $45,000 increase. Those are the two main changes to the expense. And so that's putting total expense up by 7.6%. And we're now looking at educational spending up 9.5%. Any questions on that before we look at tax rate? Okay, so if you go to the tax rate sheet, there's been two changes to this since we looked at the last draft, other than the expense and the education spending. So as I mentioned, expense is up 7.6, education spending is up 9.5. Pupils, that's the long-term weighted ADM. We did see a slight increase since the last draft. Last time we were at 760, now we're at 768. And that is pretty significant. I mean, even eight pupils at $94.52 per pupil, you're looking at approximately $80,000 there. So that does help out when the tax rate goes. So you take your education spending divided by your long-term weighted average to get your ed spending per pupil, that's the 13,684. And you divide that by the yield to get your equalized tax rate. So we're currently looking, we would be looking at a $1.44 tax rate, which is up by 22.83%. As we talked about in depth at the last meeting, Act 127 has that 5% cap for the next four years, as long as we meet for certain criteria, which we currently are. So instead of a $1.44 tax rate, we would be looking at a $1.23 tax rate, 5% increase. That's preCLA. So the CLA, which is the Common Level Appraisal, is the next part of the calculation. This is the other piece of news that we just received Tuesday at 6 o'clock. We were supposed to have it, it's usually out December 15th. And many of our districts and many, many, if not almost all of them statewide, are seeing significant drop in CLA rates. While in town, CLA is impacted by 10.63%. So your CLA went from 84 to 75. CLA, just for any board members who are new, compares fair market value of your home to the assessed value of your home. When the fair market value and the assessed value are equal, your CLA is 100%. If your fair market value of your home increases, it's saying, and your home is now under assessed, it drops to CLA. And so when you look at your tax rate, you have to now divide your pre-CLA tax rate divided by that CLA to make your, to make your, to make your district whole. So it's saying your whole town is under assessed, so we need, we need to charge more taxes so that you're paying, if your, if your town is fully assessed, at 100%. So being 75%, we have to take your $1.23 divided by that 75% to get your new tax rate, which brings it up to $1.64 if you look at with the cap, and $1.91 without the cap. So the column in the gray, that's what your actual tax rate would be. I mean, it's estimated at this point because we don't know what the yield is going to be. But based on these factors, that's what your tax rate would be. And then I just wanted to show you, just for illustration purposes, without that cap, if it was not in place, you would be at $1.91, which is approximately a 52 cent increase, or 37%. So significant, the CLA is really having, I can't stress it enough, it's having such a significant impact. Ira, Corey Valley, they're all in the same, in the same situation. Corey Valley had an emergency meeting today to, because the board reopened their budget and looking at making significant cuts. Your situation's a little bit different, because even if you made cuts, you would have to make enough cuts to get under that 5% window in order to impact your tax rate for this year. So you would have to make pretty significant cuts. And then, I mean, if you're interested, I could tell you what that number is. It should take me a minute or two. But any, any small changes you make won't have an impact on your adjusted tax rate actual. It would only impact the adjusted tax rate without the cap, which is something that, I mean, to think about long-term as we go to FY '29, FY '30, because eventually that cap's going to go away. But it's not something that we need to act on at this time, because it won't impact taxpayers for next year. Does that all make sense?
What have you heard other school districts doing around the state? Because I'm assuming that a lot of cities or in towns have been affected by this.
I think, I haven't heard much yet, because the CLAs just came out on Tuesday. I know there was an email chain for all the business managers today emailing the state. And everyone is saying the same thing, that they're seeing, they're at the 5% cap, but their tax rate's up 15, 17, 18%. And some of those people that were not at the 5% cap, I mean, such as Corey Valley, they weren't at the 5% cap, and they're still seeing tax rate increases of 17, 16, 15% for each town. So many of the towns are screaming the same thing. I'm not sure what they're doing yet. I know those towns that have not met the cap may be making cuts. But those towns that have met the cap really are probably in the same boat as you, and they're probably saying, well, it doesn't make sense to make cuts now because they're not going to impact their tax rate.
Thoughts from the board? What are your thoughts, Jeff?
Well, this is a lot to swallow, but I think this year, we need to support the budget as much as we can. You know, cutting $20,000 here or $30,000 there is not going to, like you just said, it's not going to change anything.
We did put $100,000 into the reserves, which we still have to ask. But would it make sense to move it back out?
Well, so we're up nine and a half.
Yeah.
We're capped at five. So unless we cut...
That won't bring us down to below five.
If we cut more than four and a half, we're not moving the dial, so...
How much would that cut, though?
You would have to cut $1.6 million to fall below on the cap.
So it won't matter, anyway?
How did the decision...
Wait, 1. what?
Six million.
1.6 million.
Yeah.
Correct.
How do the decision makers look at this and say, this makes a lot of sense? Like, how is, how is people just not raising heck about this entire situation?
Well, this will drive the market value down of the houses, because no one's going to want to move here with tax increases of 15% or more from one year to the next. That's ridiculous.
I just, I mean, I feel like all of this work, I don't see that, we're ultimately here for a product of delivering education. And I don't see this, any of this action being done in Montpelier, delivering a better education. Am I wrong about that, or am I? I'm just trying to get a grip on how we make these decisions.
I mean, I really can't give you a good answer. I think legislators make decisions, and many of you know, I'm sure, that many of the decisions that happen in Montpelier are not based out of Rutland County. They're coming from larger Chittenden County-type counties that have more control in the Senate and the, in the House. Unfortunately, I know we talked to our legislators, but getting a couple of votes doesn't really help.
In the position we are in, as well as Chris, putting, not pressure, but more, more conversations with our legislators. Again, we're only Rutland County, which is three senators out of the whole state. I mean, that, it's a formulaic, and it's been like this since the late 90s. And then they changed the formula. It has nothing to do with how do we deliver education. Certain things, every year, whether we decide to not spend a dime, are going to go up. We have baked-in salary increases. We have healthcare that's going up out of our control. So there's really no way to flatline a budget every year without cutting. But even if you do that, the CLA, and again, market values have gone way up. That's out of our control unless the town decides to do a reassessment, which is out of our purview. That's the select board's decision. And the way Vermont publicly educates and the way we spend money since the late 90s, it's, a lot of it's out of our local control. What we have to look for is the next five years, what do we want to do? Next year, I think we've done, and thank you, Louis, and the admin for building a good budget. We did some tweaks. I think we got some things in. We have a 5% cap for the next four years. But next year, we're probably, what, three and a half up before we even start? Just from automatic increases? And that's what we're going to be looking at for the next five years. And whether, in my personal opinion, the state's going to have to make massive adjustments on that fifth-year cliff, just because it's, I mean, you look at a Rutland City that should have had a windfall from this adjustment, their tax rate's going up. So who's saving money here? Nobody. I'd personally probably think that Chittenden County's getting a decent amount of money shoveled their way, but it is what it is. So we just have to be, you know, we got to provide for our kids, provide for the school, and be as, as fiscally conservative as we can for our constituents. But at this point, $1.6 million is just going to chop this school in half to try to get, to try to save a couple pennies on the, on the tax rate.
I think you would find it very, very hard to try to cut 1.69 in the budget to even get it to that point.
And I don't, I don't, I don't disagree long-term. I think the state, a lot of it's out of our control. The legislators need to make some decisions about how to really consolidate school districts to make sense to save costs across, across borders. It isn't happening now, and it's just nothing we can do about it. We, again, we shouldn't just throw caution in the wind and spend as much as we want. But in my personal opinion, we've provided a budget that makes sense for this school. There's still a lot of wants I'd like to have, but we're there. We're not over the cap. And I'm comfortable presenting this. We have some remediation we need to do in the school. We need more space for our population and to provide the high-quality education we do. And again, not to say we're not, we're a good school. We could still be greater, and that requires resources. And we're not overspending, in my assessment.
What were you going to say, Louis?
I think I was just going to mention, even with the 1.6, if you were to cut the 1.6, that gets you below the cap, but you still would be looking at, the cap is just pre-CLA, and then the CLA would still, you would still be at a 16% tax rate increase, even with the one, cutting 1.6 million. So I mean, there, it's really, I mean, you really are, have limited choices, other than see your taxes increase.
So a reassessment for the town would be beneficial to the school, but not...
Well, you balance it out, so your municipal budget, I mean, it takes, I don't know what your house is assessed at, but after COVID, it'll be double. So, I mean, you make some savings, but your tax rate goes down, but your assessed value's higher. I mean, we're going to have to do it.
In theory, looking at the town in a whole, the taxes should be the same. You still have the same pot of money to raise. So if your taxes, if your homes are under assessed, you're going to raise the value of your homes and have a little bit lower of a tax rate. But town-wide, you should still be paying the same amount of taxes. Some, some people may see a 30% increase in their home value. Others may see a 15% increase in their home value. So there may be not total equity across every home. But looking on the average, you would still be seeing the same tax hit across the town.
What's, so just to let, I mean, again, I think it's part of what we're presenting to the public is even to get below the cap to start making any dial movement, we got to look at a $1.6 million cut. If they want us to do that, sure. But that's to even start making dial adjustments. So we do have to show them, what does this mean? What, it's a, what's that, 25 cents on the adjusted rate? What's that mean per $100,000, roughly, Louis?
So 25 cents would be 250 per $100,000.
Yeah, so for people at home, and maybe we put in a brochure, taking a look at your property tax bill. Let's say your house is assessed at $200,000. On the town's assessment, you're going to be adding $500 in educational annual tax.
Were you getting the 25%?
So right now, it's 1.39. We're going up to 1.64.
Oh, 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 okay.
So it's roughly 25 cents. And then, so per $100,000, you're looking at, if your house is worth $100,000, your taxes are going up 250 bucks. And kind of do the math on your own tax bill. But for us to even, to make it less than $250 and even start to talk, walking that backwards, we need to cut $1.6 million first, before we start to see you get any savings.
And it wouldn't, it would still be minimal.
I mean, we'd have to cut another, if we cut 3.2, we can keep you where you are, which is what, 32%? So if we slash our budget 32%, you can keep your taxes where they are. That's just a realistic number.
Only about 2.9.
Yeah, all right. Give or take. Million here, million there. Pretty soon, we'll talk real numbers.
It is really unfortunate, and it's all out of your control. It's all, these are all state-level decisions that are impacting your taxpayers. I mean, I think we need to, when we're sending out our communications, make, make that clear. I mean, CLA, CLA is, I mean, it's a statewide calculation, but it's sort of environmental, but the whole Act 127 definitely is having the hugest impact.
So Louis, what would, what is the total amount of money that we need to? Is this the amount on this paper here, correct, or not?
No, that was old numbers.
That's an old one?
Yeah.
So what is the total?
I think... Yeah, these are all numbers.
The budget was in the package, Draft 3. That was, that should have the correct amount on it.
10.694. Is that what you're looking for?
Yes, $10,694,628.
Yeah.
It's on the last page.
I don't have that, I don't have that page.
Yeah, it's right there.
Sorry.
It's in the last page. It's okay. It's right there.
Okay. Thank you.
It just further promotes what our job is here, is to make sure we hold Chris and his team to the fire, that we have a good product. We have, that's why we're showing on a monthly basis what our kids are doing, is we need to show that to the public. You know, if we're, if we were a failing district, it'd be a different story. And a smaller district, in my opinion. But with 353 students, we're giving them big, pretty big leg up. And that's what we got to show the community. And that's why people are still moving here. That's why our property values are high. If, if I put my house on the market, as high as it is, someone would buy it to move their kids here. And that's what we need to present, along with the numbers, to show them what they're spending, but this is what you're getting. And if we start slashing year in and year out, and you can see what you're going to get there, too. That's our job. And our job is to make sure that our team does their job to make sure our kids are still at the top of the table, and they are. So we appreciate that, and that's what we need to show them. Because if we don't show them that, then they're going to start to think, why am I spending all this money? But part of the reason their property values are so high isn't just COVID. It's because of this school. You look at the city, and I love the city, too, but you have parents that are spending money for kids to go through K-8. We have some people that are in a town that has free schooling, and they're paying whatever our tuition is, which is ridiculous, out of their pocket to send a kid to K-8. I mean, that speaks a lot to what we're providing here.
And they don't have a choice, either?
Yeah.
After that?
Yeah. Very somber.
Rutland City's CLA went down almost as much as ours.
You're muted, Louis.
Oh, I think it went down seven points, yes.
Yeah.
The average across the state was 7%.
So it sounds like your recommendation is not to touch the budget right now and to approve it as is, and just let the public know why it's so high and that there's really nothing we can do about it without compromising services and education for our kids.
That would be my recommendation at this time. Because it won't have a tax rate impact, to make cuts at this ti, at this point in time, they would be rushed and not well-thought-out. I think the board really needs to decide what they want to see, what, long-term, budget-wise, and determine whether do we want, are we good with the tax rate? I mean, nobody wants to pay more, but are we comfortable with the tax rate? Or do we need to look at, for future years, making cuts and trying to find ways to be more efficient if possible so that we can lessen the burden come FY '30? So that, and you have four years to do that, rather than try to do that in two weeks.
And the, the CLA, it's not an inflationary thing, right? So in all likelihood, if the market stays relatively flat in this next year, then we'll see the same, like, 75?
Correct. Or you can see if, if home values start to decrease, you can see that number go back up and that will lower tax rates.
I don't want to go on that assumption, but I could go on the assumption that they're not going to continue at the level that they were.
I mean, I think over time, long-term, I mean, inflationary is a factor as far as home values continue to go up because the dollar's worth less. So, I mean, long-term, you should see, you should always see CLA drop slowly, not, not to the significant factors that we've seen the last few years. But a couple of points, just because, I mean, you want your home values to increase over time because your, your money's worth less.
Is there anything that's variable that I'm missing? Like, that potentially, I mean, we, we pass, we vote on this budget, it's 9.59. Is there anything here that can skew up, that will throw us over 10? At the end of the day, that say, hey, you guys blew it?
No, so the only variable that's left is the, the yield, the 9.452. And that could go up or down. I mean, I'm hopeful that it will go up. Up will lower tax rates. For, not for you, though, because you are at that cap. So it would, unless it changed significantly enough, which it would have to change probably about 15%, it won't impact you for the short term. It would only impact you long-term, looking towards the end of that cap. So I don't anticipate any changes for you for Rutland Town.
Okay.
I will entertain a motion from a board member.
I would make a motion to pass the FY '25 budget as presented in its third round with a total expense of $10,694,628.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you, Louis.
Are you doing a separate motion for the $100,000?
I'll make a motion to...
I think you made a motion last time. Just do it again to make sure. I don't know. I have to look at the minutes.
I don't have that. It might be in the minutes. And then have you also made a motion to, about the bond?
No, we, not yet.
Okay.
We're discussing that next. Colin first made a motion to move $80,000. After continued discussion, Colin amended his motion to move $100,000. After additional continued discussion, Colin moved as follows. To include on the warning, an item on the ballot to hold back up to 50% of the surplus to be put in a capital reserve fund. There was no further discussion, and the motion passed unanimously. So it was already done, Louis. All right, so we already have those two items done. Any questions on the financial reports for Louis? Okay, so moving on to the second floor update. So the only thing I have to add is I did speak with Marty from PCI just to get a definite price point for a clerk of the works. Colin, would you mind hitting the screen real quick? Sorry. I know that I had quoted that I thought it was 110 an hour, but it just, I couldn't find anything to corroborate that. So I just reached out to him, and he said, yes, it will be close to that, or even up to 120, depending if we went with a clerk of the works or the other person he mentioned. Let's see here. It's an OPM. I forget what that stands for. Owner's Project Manager. He recommended with the information I gave him that that's probably what we would want to go with. And he quoted that, I think, at 120. So the clerk of the works was $100 per hour, which he anticipated anywhere from 20 to 40 hours a week. Or the owner's project manager, which was 120 per hour. But he wasn't sure what to quote for the estimated number of hours without more information from us. Given the budget information, I didn't know... Given the budget information, I didn't know how people felt about this at this time. So I kinda wanted to just go around to the board members and get your sense of what you wanna do, whether we wanna stall or proceed right now, just to save time on discussion. So Abby, I'll start with you. You're muted. Sorry.
Um, hmm. I would just say, go ahead.
Jeff?
Yep, go ahead.
Tim?
I'm fine with, I mean, knowing that we got a four-year window and this is gonna hit us the next, bond's out fifteen years. I mean, at least the first four years are subsidized, since we're subsidizing the rest of the state.
Um, could someone remind me how long they think it'll take for the project? I couldn't find that quickly. Do Louis or Chris know?
We, we didn't get it a timeline from, uh, we might have had. I can reach back out to Ed to see if he could give us an approximate timeline, but that might be difficult to do.
Chris, I think we asked him, but it really depends on contractors, availability, et cetera. So he just said, kinda, at that time, he wasn't able to give us the timeline. Cause I had asked him early on about that, if I remember correctly.
But if, if we, I, I think I'm, I'm hesitating, not because we don't need it, but because I feel like if we go out and there's this huge percentage increase in taxes, um, I, just the chance that they're going to say yes is so low. And I, I hate to put it out there again, cause I think it's already been put out twice and voted down, according to Lynette, though it may have been less than that, but I, I'm pretty sure she said it was already put up twice. I do think it, I think it would be very nice to have. I think it, I think in a lot of ways we need it, but we also have a lot of tax issues right now. So I'm just very concerned about adding extra costs when we're looking at trying to figure out how we can cut the budget over the next four years to make it reasonable.
What was the bond, two percent increase?
I think it was like two point four percent or...
Louis, the bond increased the budget two point four percent or so.
If, if we added the paving project.
Exactly. Let me, I'm just...
I might, might be in the notes.
It may have been two pennies.
Yeah, it was, it was two point oh five percent increase, um, and went up to two point four three if we added the abatement. So... I don't know. I mean, I, I do agree that we do have some few years subsidized, you know, three years or so, or four. But it's not a lot. So.
Market conditions are never good to go for an ask, but what's the worst that the, the population could say, we don't want it? I mean, we, we've kinda outlined, we need it. I think we've streamlined it to the, the fiscally lowest cost we can. It adds space. I don't know what the future landscape looks like in Vermont, but, you know, we have three hundred and fifty-three kids. We don't see a population decline for Rutland Town. People are still wanting to move here. We, we need space. We, we can add here. Um, and again, if consolidation's coming down the road, we're in a better position having a newer, higher, better tech school. Um, I, I guess, again, I don't know what the landscape is. If we have runaway costs like this for the next five years, something's gotta give. Or we're just gonna be staring at massive property taxes. And that's not, not to say that couldn't happen either. I mean, we think it's high here, but you step into New York State and property taxes are amply higher than they are here. So, um, again, we present to the public, we need the space. The, the schools told us, the admins told us. Um, we're not building a new structure. I wish we'd done it twenty years ago and, you know. If we don't, if, if the voting public doesn't want it, they don't want it. But by delaying it, we're just gonna be spending more down the road. And again, if, if they say no, that's fine, too. But we gotta present it, I think. You know, we've, we've spent a lot of time, a lot of everyone's time, not to say you just wanna jam it down their throat, but if we need the space, we need the space. And, um, again, you gotta decouple from the bu- public. I'm talking to hopefully anyone who's watching, but, you know, there's noth- we can't cut one point six million in our budget this year. So there's nothing we can do about your property taxes, sadly. So, you know, next year, if we do pass this, you know, we're gonna start at a two point four percent increase. But, you know, this year, we started with sixteen percent increase in healthcare. That had nothing to do with any of us. This is something we can actually put our hands in touch and you can come in and see it and your kids can use it and your grandkids can use it and expand. So at least we can see it.
I totally concur with what you're saying. And it's like, the thirty years that I worked here, we, we built the addition down there. And other than asking for money to do the gym floor and carpet and that kinda stuff, to my knowledge, that's never been out to bid, never been looked at to, to go on the ballot. I'm sorry what Lynette said, but I don't ever recall us going out to bid or for budgets to do any increases. I mean, I, there was years that I had zero percent increases to do anything. So it's like, you can't do that today. There's things have to be maintained. Things have to be up kept. And to get that second floor done would be a, a big boost to the, the whole school across the board. So that's why we've been kinda working on this and trying to figure this out. I think we should do it. Try it. It's just like the budget itself this year. Try it. Cause it's like, you don't know what's gonna happen.
I mean, we, we put out, what, how much for the architect?
Um, I don't remember now. Fifteen thousand, ten thousand?
Which we'd have to do again, right? In two years if we decided to go back. Not again. I mean, I guess twelve thousand isn't a ton of money in a ten million dollar budget, but...
So is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the second floor addition.
With or without the abatement?
Without the abatement. We don't need to do the abatement on the second floor.
No, we're talking about including the...
Including it into the bond.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, it, there's, it's not gonna be a lot of it. But, yeah, we should.
So include the, um, what Kelly had written up. Is that what Kelly provided today, Sarah?
Yes.
Yes. So with the abatement?
Yes.
I think we're gonna need to have like a dollar amount that we're gonna have to put on the ballot.
Last time we did four.
Do we have that?
So it came in the computer today in the bucket, not an email, in the bucket. The drive. Sorry. It came in my drive on the computer. Um, the flooring update, I think.
I got the flooring update.
Yeah.
Now it does.
Yep.
He did, so he provided two things. He did the, the flooring style and size. That's a spreadsheet, a PDF of a spreadsheet. And then that's the one Tim and Jeff are holding. And then.
I see those, but I mean...
He did the description.
For him to make a motion, we're gonna need to like, what's the dollar?
Oh, for the dog.
For the whole upgrade.
Yeah, so.
I mean, so you can...
The, yeah, the abatement's down. The numbers are at the very last page of that spreadsheet if you scroll over.
So the abatement costs plus the flooring costs, is that what we were looking at?
Yes. So that first, so if you're looking at the last page of the spreadsheet, you see that one. So that first, it says abatement costs and then twenty-seven, seven, sixty-two. So that's to get the, um, testing done. And then the next column over that ninety thousand, nine fifty-three. So that's what has to be abated. That's already been tested, definitely has it, has to be abated. So then to replace that flooring is the next one down, next row down, which is that eighty-two, nine. And then the one, so the yellow is, um, the flooring that could probably be abated, like, but hasn't been tested yet. So I'm not a hundred percent sure. Likely has it. So it probably has to be abated. And that number down there, uh, the one right below it is, um, to replace that flooring after being abated. The green is if you wanted to do more flooring, if you wanted to, to take out anything else. And that's what in the spreadsheet you can see on the right side, it says asbestos. It's highlighted green and says no. So that means that flooring doesn't have it, doesn't have to be replaced. But if you wanted to, that's the estimate for replacing that flooring.
Reds, we have to.
Yeah, the red ninety thousand, nine fifty-three, that's the flooring that definitely has to be abated. It has asbestos in it. To replace that flooring, that's your eighty-two thousand, nine hundred.
So.
What's the difference?
Yeah, I don't understand. Do you add them together?
I don't know the word.
Yeah, after you, after my understanding, and I'm not an expert in this by any means, so Jeff, you, I know this is your realm, too. If you abate it, you have to replace the flooring. My, is my understanding. Is that right, Jeff? So that's why that eighty-two thousand, nine hundred is to replace that flooring. You have that.
Yep.
So I guess I'm, I'm just confused what the totals are then.
This is because of the P.
Cause the Flotex and the Carnidian are two different options. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So the columns at the bottom don't go with the Flotex and the Carnidian?
They go with, um, it's hard to see on the computer, but you, it's really slightly highlighted. Like if you look at, um, row one twenty, you can see where that two thousand, three hundred eighty is kind of highlighted like yellow, like a lighter yellow.
In one twenty?
In, yep, in row one twenty.
In row one twenty?
Yep. Gym bathroom hall. See where that's two thousand, three hundred eighty.
Mine just looks like black.
I'm looking at, oh, I'm sorry. Um, I was looking at room number. So row one twenty-eight. So that says gym bathroom hall.
Oh, I see the light yellow.
See that light yellow? So that, all of the estimates have, have that light yellow.
But I, I'm asking at the bottom where it has the totals. I'm very confused as, are we, what's the total for just abatement and versus abatement plus making the other flooring nicer?
Yeah. So if you look at, um, where it says abatement cost, it has that twenty-seven, seven, sixty-two. Then you go over to that two oh five, uh, two hundred and five thousand.
That has nothing to do with marmoleum, even though it's in that column?
That's just abating, correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a separate section. Correct. Yeah.
So the flooring cost below that is, um, they're still red and yellow. That's, I think that's why I'm confused.
Yeah. Yeah, so the red is that, that goes with the abating. So that ninety thousand, nine fifty-three has to be abated. That's what does have the asbestos. And then to replace that flooring is eighty-two thousand, nine hundred. So the abatement cost is separate than the actual putting the flooring in.
So we would have to add the final columns, uh, the final column, two oh five plus one, four fourteen?
Yes. However, the four fourteen includes that green, which you wouldn't have to do.
Which is hard to read, but it looks like it's two hundred sixty-one.
Yep, two hundred sixty-six fifty-three. Yep.
That's a six? Oh, two hundred sixty thousand, six fifty-three. Okay.
Yep. Yep. So you don't have to do that. That is, that doesn't have to be replaced, but if you wanted to, that's why that's included in there. So as far as like have to do, that red ninety thousand, nine fifty-three and that eighty-two thousand, nine hundred definitely has it, has to be abated and replaced. The yellow is probable. So again, hasn't been tested, probably has asbestos. So that's that yellow. Um, so if you have the two hundred five thousand, oh twenty-four, that is for all of those abatement costs. And as far as have to, if you take that four fourteen, eight seventy and take the green out, you'd take out about two hundred sixty thousand and that's where you get your total cost. It was confusing to me, too. Kelly had to explain it to me for twenty minutes, but.
So.
Kelly was planning on coming to the meeting if it was scheduled, but he's at a basketball game tonight coaching. So he worked with Mike and I and then Mike again, cause he was in person. So good job, Mike. I know it was confusing.
Yeah, this is not my area of expertise, but that's it.
Um, and going back to the totals, um, estimate for the second floor, it does not include any of having a clerk of the works or, um, owners' project manager on there. So that cost would probably go up a little bit. I'm gonna guess sixty to eight, eighty thousand? Is that, would you think that would be accurate or less? Twenty thousand, forty thousand? Louis or Chris, do you have any idea?
I don't really know. I mean, it, I mean, I think we need to know the, the length of the project. Cause if we're looking at a hundred and ten dollars an hour, if this is a one-year project versus a two-year, I know that Ed had said that it would not be done in phases, cause you, I know the board had asked about phasing this out and, uh, he did not believe in that. He said it should just, should be done in one project. So if this is a two-year project, uh, it, it could, you know, like I said, I, I don't really know the involvement of the clerk of works. It's, I, I, the only thing I'm looking at is like when we had to redo Terry Norwich Field and the amount of time that was spent on a six-month project, um, it just, it could be pretty, it could be a pretty nominal fee. It'd depend on what we asked that individual to do. So.
So we have to have a fudge factor in there.
So I would, I would go with an overly conservative estimate.
So if we, if we move this up to thirty-five, or three million, five hundred for inflation and just making sure we don't have to go back to voters, hopefully. And then we figure on five hundred thousand for the abatement and whatever carpet we can afford or nice flooring, once we figure out the construction part. So it'd be a four million bond for those things. Yeah. And that way we have a little flexibility. We can do a little less flooring if we need to add a little bit more to the construction. So if we did four million, Louis, could you tell us what that would be, again, with the bond updates that you have? Just wanna make sure we have accurate information before we...
Yeah, just give me one minute.
No worries.
So if we did a twenty-year bond, which I think this one was large enough that we could, it'd be about two eighty-six, two hundred eighty-six thousand a year. Oh, no, wait. No, hold on one second.
That's why I love erasable pens.
Sorry.
No worries.
Twenty-eight thousand a month. Twenty-eight, six fifty-seven per month times twelve. So three forty-three a year. And I'm, I based that on six percent. So, uh, I think it'd be less. Uh, cause we do get better rates through the bond market. If we were to be able to get a four percent rate. And by the time we actually go out to bonds, the rates may come down a little bit. Uh, that could be a two ninety a year payment. That could be a 290 a year payment. I could definitely check with the bond market, the, the bond office, and just give them the bond amount and try to get an estimate. The numbers I'm giving you are just really estimates, I mean, they can give me a really, a better.
This still gives us a sense, thank you.
Yeah.
So then what, what percentage would that be for, like, starting out when we're looking at budget?
What, 2.8 and 3, 3.4, right? Fixed payment divided by our budget.
It's about, yeah, 2.8%.
So is that what you want to say, up to 4 million? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Was that an aye, Colin?
Yeah, aye.
Okay. All right, I will support it then. See what happens. Colin, you had said that you would be able to pull something together for the presentation. Wonderful, thank you. And then I will reach out to him, to Marty, about, just to get more of a quote too, and bring that back for the February meeting, just to have that information of what it would cost us to hire him, and then we can decide if we want to go out to bid or not for that, I guess. All right. Next up is warning. So I think we have numbers now we can put into the warning, Louis.
So the number on for the budget would be the 10,694,628.
Can I borrow that warning paper you had before?
What?
The warning paper you had before?
Oh, that.
One with all the wrong numbers on it?
I got that here somewhere, give me one, there you go.
Thank you. And then electing the school officials, and then number three would be the moving the $100,000 to the capital improvement fund. And then number four would be approving a 4 million dollar bond for the construction of a second floor. And abatement of asbestos throughout the building. And then the meeting is January 16th at 6:30 PM. We will be going first. And the town meeting will start at 7:00. So, Louis, will you be joining us remotely that meeting or not able to come? I forget.
The one in January I can attend, the one in March, I, I know in the past I've gone to your and Chris has gone to your meeting.
But you will be able to be there on the 16th?
Well, is that the date that's been set, the 16th?
Yes. It's a Monday. I mean, is it a Monday? It's a Tuesday, sorry. It's a Tuesday after Martin Luther King Day, 6:30 PM in the cafeteria.
Yes.
So if we could all get here a little earlier, because we have to start promptly. And then usually there's a short presentation that I think you've done on PowerPoint, Louis, or Sarah, I don't remember who. Is that something that will still be provided that evening? Yes. And we'll try to keep that as quick as possible too, so that we have time to talk about the second floor. Well.
What's up that date?
The school, I mean, the town, the town.
One and a half before voting day? We don't want to do it like closer, so people have fresh information in their mind?
Well, they do it the night before the meeting too.
Yes, I thought.
Yeah, they do both, this is like a feelers, yeah.
I did forget one thing, that was, you had asked Kelly about HVAC and pavement costs, he did note in his description, I don't have details on this, but he's working with a contractor, doesn't have HVAC costs, because we were asking about roping that into the second floor too.
We can't even afford both, like, all the flooring that he wanted anyway, so.
He wasn't able to get them, so, but just so you know, and the same with the pavement, he doesn't have estimates, but.
I mean, we can, we, we didn't say, we, we could add in number four for the second floor asbestos abatement and improvements at the school or something like that.
That's completely up to you.
Nina, do you, do you want him to continue getting those numbers? He is working with somebody for HVAC. They said they get back to him early January, he contacted them Tuesday, and he said give him two more weeks, so I think he's working on an estimate. Do you want me to have them stop doing that?
No, I, I, I don't think it hurts to have the information. But I don't know how much we'll be able to do.
Right, I think we can get it, but the tough part is that we've done, like, Jeff has been through this before, and then people are less reluctant to get back to you. You know, just because they're like, well, we gave you an estimate two years ago, so I, I will, if that's what the board wants, I'll tell them to get the estimate.
I don't know if it's necessary at this time, because, I, I think it, I mean, I don't know. What does everyone else think?
He can hold off on that for now, I think, I don't think we need to get that additional work, I think he's got, did enough right now, so.
Given how much the carpet and asbestos abatement would be, you know, I don't know if it makes sense, because I, I don't, our bond wouldn't even cover it, and we don't know how much of the extra besides the asbestos we'll be able to do. So I don't think we'll get to it right now. Anybody else have anything else to add? Okay. So I just want to make sure we word the bonding so that it gives us flexibility, Louis, on the warning for the bond. So I know, so I, I guess, we're, it's for the second floor renovation or whatever you want to call it, finishing of the second floor, the asbestos abatement, and the only other cost we have right now are, or that we have would be the carpets, but if there's enough, if it makes more sense to do something else to improve the school versus the carpet with the leftover money, if there is any, I don't know how to word that.
Well, I'm wondering if you should not put asbestos abatement on there, just put second floor renovations as well as other building renovations, this way, yeah, it gives you that more flexibility.
And other school improvements or something like that?
Other necessary building improvements.
Yeah, physical improvements.
Yeah, something like that, I think it would give us more flexibility of how to use the extra funds, but it, and also gives us extra flexibility for the second floor if it comes in higher than we're expecting.
Yep.
So you, you don't want Kelly to get those numbers at this time?
Not for the HVAC.
Not HVAC or paving?
Or paving at this point, I, I mean, unless he feels that's more important than improving all the other carpets and flooring that aren't necessary.
Yeah, I think that's, I'm, I'm, won't speak for him, I think that's probably the priority, but.
Yeah, so whatever the priority is, is where he should focus right now, and what he gave us is already higher than we're going to be able to afford.
That's what I thought, okay.
So.
Thank you.
And thank you for word shopping that, Louis. And then, Chris, this is going, that warning's going to be at the school office, so that the five of us can come in and sign it before the meeting, is that how it works? Because we need it before the 16th?
Yes, what we can do is, because Christine will be out tomorrow, we can have that drafted ready to go, we could bring that over Monday morning to, uh, we can get over there early next week, so we have, we have time, we'll be fine.
Uh, once it's over here, can someone just send out a little email blast letting everyone know to come in and sign it?
I'll have Christine send out an email to, to everyone.
Okay, great.
About that, okay.
Is it necessary to do before the meeting or after? Because I, when are they, because they're doing the, the actual booklet after the meeting, aren't they?
Correct, I mean, we, we just need it signed so that we, we can begin the warning it on the 20th, that's really when we need to have it signed.
So we could just do it at the meeting?
Correct, we can do it at the meeting on the 16th, yes, you can do it there as well.
So why don't we just plan on that, and that way no one has to come for an extra trip to the school?
Sure, that would work.
So if you're not going to be able to make the meeting on the 16th, you'll have to figure out how to get it signed before then, or after, before the 20th.
It does look better with all signatures on the warning, correct?
Yeah. So, but we'll just plan to do it that evening then. So thank you. All right. So I don't think that needs any more action, Chris, is that correct?
That's correct, we're fine there.
Perfect. All right, moving on to directors' orders, I need a motion to approve them.
Go.
Thank you, Colin, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Abby, unanimous. Approval of the minutes from December 12th?
Make a motion to approve?
Thank you, Jeff. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, unanimous. And now, superintendent and principal updates.
Sarah, I'll let you start with the PCB, and I will pick up since you've been the major, uh, main messenger around this, so.
Yeah, so we met with Evan Pendleton and Danielle, I'm forgetting her last name, from the Health Department just before break, we received results of our PCB testing thus far, and have received recommendations on next steps. Kelly Treya has been working tirelessly in communicating with the contractor that's coming in to help with remediation. And, um, sorry, and we had a fact, so we shared information with parents, and then we had a faculty meeting with the Department of Health and Evan, and then we had a community meeting last evening, received a number of phone calls and emails throughout the day today, and any questions should be forwarded to them, and we're moving forward.
Did you share, or could you share with everyone where the recording is from the webinar from last evening?
Yeah, it, um, Shannon and I asked her to put her, put it on the website, so let me check her website right now and see where that is, good question.
Sarah, would it be possible to place that link in your TISC as well? As you send that out?
Yeah, well, we shared it, um, the TISC is only shared with faculty and staff, so.
Your parent, yeah, both.
Yeah, the, the parent newsletter, that goes out tomorrow, so I was going to put the link in the parent newsletter. I can absolutely do that. So, yep.
Thank you.
Sure.
From your perspective, has it changed a lot at the school? Was it a, a big lift for you, or just out of curiosity? Or has it been okay, it's been doable and workable?
For me personally, I feel that this is a flashback of COVID. I think I was on the phone with Chris for hours today with Kelly Treya. We received 42 questions from Monsanto that we need to address and answer, we were given a couple-week timeline. There's more, there, there's a lot going on around PCBs. And just a lot of questions, like I had a lot of community members reach out to me today asking about, you know, relatives that are at the Pines or the Maples, why aren't hospitals doing this testing? Why aren't other states doing this testing, why is it just Vermont schools? So I would just say inundated right now with questions and concerns about health and safety of full in our school.
So I think she's, Sarah obviously is frozen. I, I think the, the one thing she was trying to say towards the end is similar to as during COVID, Sarah, myself, Kelly, staff, we were relying on the expertise of the DEC, the Department of environmental conservation, and the Department of Health. Were providing guidance to us around this, you know, we, you know, we have Harper Environmental who we've contracted with, who is coming in, who does the testing, does the sampling, will then provide a work plan for us around, you know, the air filters that'll be placed in, I think, 31 different spaces around our building. And also as they identify PCB sources, will then set up a work plan to appropriately mitigate and remediate those sources. And this is something which we, like I said, we, we are, we follow, you know, their guidance. This is not a decision that we make, it really is, you know, so we, we work closely with the DEC and Department of Health. You know, from an SU standpoint, we've had this situation in other schools, and it's very similar to this, where, you know, there have been concerns because of what PCBs are, you know, but, you know, the, the levels that are in there in our school. We feel that, you know, as the Department of Health and DEC has assured us that it is safe for our staff, our students to be in the spaces that they're in. If they felt there was any concern or if there are any risk or a danger, then we would be proceeding differently. But like I said, we are following the guidance from these two organizations here, so.
Can I just say? Oh. I just.
No, I just think. Go ahead.
No, my question would be, is, um, two things, there, there seems to be a lot of areas that weren't tested. And are they going to be tested?
So, so that is a common question that we receive, that, you know, that all of our communities have, you know, that in other, or I should say, other communities that have had schools tested, both in RSU and outside, is when they, how they sample, how they test. And I'm not an expert, I don't know, but they, I know that they sample locations, they don't sample every single classroom or space, and so, and when they finish their sampling, they then have a good understanding in terms of where, what the levels of PCBs are in our school, and what the next steps should, should be. The concern that was brought up yesterday, and I think Sarah can talk about this a little more closely, was just around two other spaces, two other wings that, that may not have been sampled or tested, because there was a misunderstanding in terms of the construction, when they were constructed, when they were built. Sarah and Kelly have been on the phone, have been emailing back and forth with the DEC and Department of Health all day long, and we are, and also with Craig Starrett, who is our liaison with Harper Environmental. our liaison with Harper Environmental, and we are going to make sure that all appropriate spaces are sampled and tested at Rutland Town. And so.
I I had Kelly call me today asking me about some stuff. And then I had Pam ask me about some stuff. And I just hope for sure that all of the files that we had done testing over the years was still in the filing cabinet down there. Hopefully that happens. Well, I don't know where it is.
We looked every Kelly Kelly dug apart all that the files, so we were looking for certain files from 97 to 98. So Jeff, I asked Pam to call to email you asking for those, and I asked Kelly to call you about dates of construction. We had other retired teachers calling me today. So thank you, Jeff, for your help. And other retired teachers put some some dates together, which we then shared with the DEC and DOH, which is why further testing is going to take place, which they said is common. So there I just begged to fast track all of that. So they're on it. Chris approved some stuff. Louis is aware, so we're in motion. But we have not found that testing that was done from 97 to 98. I'm not sure where those files are.
Me neither. They weren't in files downstairs down there.
So you understand about testing, but, you know, we've shared that information with the the state and with Harper Environmental, the DEC, and, you know, it said they are aware, they are running through and are going to provide updated results for Rutland Town, you know, update levels, and will be appropriately addressing this. So I know there's a lot of concern around this. I think the, you know, the, you know, and this is something which Sarah will probably put in her the apparent email as well as the test, but obviously if there are questions, Evan Pendleton, who is the drug contact for the Department of Environmental Conservation, and then Danielle Thor Kildson is her last name, is our kind of our go to for the Department of Health, as well as, she forgot, Capolino, they are much better equipped to answer a lot of these questions around, you know, Abby, like you asked a question around testing, you know, why, you know, you know, do they sample this space, not this space? Evan and Danielle will be able to better answer those questions in terms of the the method to their madness around the the testing, much better than Sarah. I, you know, we we know very little about this. They said they are the experts, they come in, they do the testing, and then they provide us with the results and then what the next steps are, so.
I'm sorry to have extra things added to your already full plate, but thank you for giving us that update. Appreciate it.
Well, and I just want to quickly say, if there are issues, we we will be addressing those. And I think that's, you know, one of the nice things about this is that we identify PCB sources, they will be mitigated or remediated. And I we spoke with Craig about this, we're handling this in other schools, so it it will be addressed and we're taking care of. So, you know, that just went to allay apparent concerns or fears. That is identify any sort of source, that'll be it'll be addressed.
Does that remediation have to be during like school breaks and things like that? Or what have you experienced?
So, yeah, and like I said, each situation is different, Tim. And I think as I identify the source, I just know that in other schools where they have identified, say, like window caulking, and they say, well, we can handle that during a break, or we can handle it during the summer, there is no real sense of immediacy. And I think that's part of where the levels are at. If there are certain thresholds, they would be a much more aggressive timeline in terms of when they need to mitigate or remediate. And I think it just depended on the level, the source, they will provide a work plan that will appropriately handle this with minimal disruption, but also not compromising the the safety or the health of students or staff in the facility. Like I said, that's a work plan that's developed by Harper Environmental and not by us.
And then.
And the work plan is real quick, and the work plan is approved by the DE the Department of Environmental Environmental Conservation and Department of Health. Everything is vetted very closely by these two organizations. And then that's once that's been approved, then that's shared with us.
And then there was also a letter sent out today about water. Sorry, do you want to share anything about that?
Yeah, and I apologize, my internet. We received notice from Rutland City. Apparently this happened after Irene as well. So that came from the from Rutland City to all residents in Rutland City and I some in the town, I believe. So all the information I have is what was in that letter that was shared with parents when we received it today with our water bill.
Just for the public, could do you mind or do you want someone else to read it off the email or can you just summarize it for the public?
If somebody wants to read it off, just in case I go out again, that would be helpful. I'm sorry.
I'm happy to. Yeah, I know. See, and I just want to quickly say, I mean, this is a city of Rutland issue, and like I said, they're just sending out notice and we were just asking for this along to our families, just to let them know. But I know that Sarah has will say this, but if people have questions, they need to be reaching out to the city of Rutland about this. And I know that they have stated that this is not an emergency. I think it's just it's notification that they have to send because of testing levels. So I just.
So there's no changes right now?
This is not a, correct?
There's no changes necessary for the school right now?
Correct.
But we're on city water.
The city of.
But we're on city water.
Handling this.
But we're on city water. Not not everybody, we're on city water at the at the school. Not everyone in the town is. Like, I have a well, most people have wells. So we should announce and you should see if your children is at school. It's not a big deal, but they have to publicly notice. And and we here at the school, you may not at home, but we're your children are on Rutland City Public School Water when they go to the tap here. So not maybe not everyone knows that, so they should. Because if you if if your community is on city water, you're going to get this at your home. But like, I'm not, so certainly nothing we can do about it, but.
We're the first on the pipeline to draw the water.
Do you want me to summarize? And if I get bad internet connection?
I just want to before we summarize, I just want to make sure as we're summarizing that this is a city of Rutland, not a Rutland Town. I just wanted to clarify so people don't all of a sudden now start to believe that, you know, the city of Rutland is handling this 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 issue.
And I would just.
Go ahead, Sarah.
I think I none of us are scientists or even probably competent enough to read it. Just refer to the email that Sarah's forwarded you, the parents, to take a read. And if you are on city water yourself, please take a read at it and direct your questions to the public department works at Rutland City.
Well said, Colin. Yes, well said, Colin. That's exactly it.
Yep, perfect. Thank you. Anything else from either of you up there? Nope. Okay. Then moving on to contract recommendations, we had one on the list, which is exciting because it's a long term subposition. Is that for the first grade, Sarah?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So is Emily Vanderheden?
Yes.
And salary will be determined once the start date is picked, it says. So I need a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Jeff. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. All right. Vacancies are in your packet or the drive for your information. As far as chair report goals goes, just from our SU meeting on Monday, Tuesday night, was that?
Tuesday.
This week has been crazy. There was a long discussion about cell phones again. There was a shared report from all of the admin about how how they teach digital citizenship in the schools and how the cellphone procedures that were implemented in the fall are are how effective they've been and problem spots that they see. And we'll be getting another update at the end of the school year to continue the discussion and just keep it in our awareness if there needs to be more of a SU wide policy or change or, you know, increase or change to the curriculum or if what we're doing is working well. And the driver's ed policy that we approved for first read was sent back by Wellspring for concerns of, I'm still not 100% sure what the concern was. I do think that they didn't understand or the wording is not clear in the title that it's for tuition school only, so it affects Rutland Town, Wellspring, and Middletown Springs and Ira. And that it wasn't, it didn't mean that students that go to Quarry Valley could go anywhere else and get reimbursed. It was, I guess, not completely understood. And because we had an abbreviated meeting on Monday night or Tuesday night, it's going to be sent back to the policy committee. So I just wanted to mention, if you have any thoughts on it before then, if you could share it with Abby or myself, if you think that there needs to be any change to what we already approved, let us know so we can let the policy committee know, and we'll go from there. Next.
I would just say, I think for you guys, that that was a great policy. I think that all the districts didn't understand, maybe we clean up the wording, but I think it was a great way to share resources if some of our kids who are at a sending school can't get into driver's ed to share resources and go take it somewhere else. It's offered if there's an opening, I think. Kind of what we bonded together as an SU to be, share resources, so help them understand or clean up the language, but I thought it was great.
Thank you, Colin. All right, moving on to policy. We had one second read policy, pre-K admission. Any motions?
Make that motion.
Thank you, Tim. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then there were two first read policies, animals on school ground and search and seizure of students and property by school personnel. The animals in school grounds was sent back from the SU to policy, I believe. But I was curious if anyone had any anything to bring that Abby and I could bring to the discussion when we meet for policy from your thoughts on it.
Whether or not schools should allow dogs on the property for like sporting events.
For sporting events was one of the main sticking points. I think there was one other thing she had said.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that to take out some of what looked like procedures and clean that up. How how does the board feel about dogs at sporting events or on school grounds?
I mean, I'm not a lawyer, but liability wise, probably not the best if someone gets bit on property. If we have a and I think it's not going to stop people from coming, but to the point, and I forgot who's brought it up, if we just have a policy, you can't do it. It kind of protects us if someone does decide to bring a dog or an animal and something happens, at least we had a policy in place versus something not. And I think that's the 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 safety dogs and the therapy dogs and the reading dogs are carved out from that, so it's not prohibiting that from happening. From my understanding. I do, I love dogs too, but at the same point, I don't want to be.
So what about outside of school events or hours?
On our property?
So I I guess one of the reasons I'm mentioning this is because of Northwood Park, the property that we have there. Dogs are allowed at Northwood Park right now, and that's technically our part of our school property.
But I think you're going to get into a sticking point because I know a lot of our schools around the SU don't play technically on their their land, like Proctor High Schools' softball teams actually Proctor youth. So I think there has to be something in there because you can't tell people no if that's not the policy of that venue. Right?
Yeah, I guess I brings up a lot of questions too. I mean, people are allowed on this property when they want to, right? It's public land?
I believe so.
If I wanted to play pickup softball, can I go back? Not during school maybe, but like on a Sunday afternoon, can I go use the fields?
Yeah.
You can like come and visit, yeah. You could like bring your kids to the playground, yeah.
Yeah, so I'd assume that if we had just a policy that you can't bring an animal to our events, that doesn't preclude them from bringing them on our property whenever they want, as long as it's not a sanctioned school event. And I would leave it to those policy committees to figure out a wordsmith if they're using someone else's property, that's someone else's animal.
All right, that's good and helpful. Thank you. Any other thoughts?
Dogs at baseball games are funny, though.
They are entertaining at times, but they are also liable liabilities. All right, search and seizure of students and property by school personnel, any discussion on that? Anyone see anything they didn't like? Well, if there's no comments, I'll take a motion.
Make a motion to approve them through.
So you'll make a motion and move just that one through?
Yeah.
No problem. All in favor?
Aye.
Colin, did you?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, no problem. All right. So our next upcoming meetings, we have January 16th. It starts promptly at 6:30. If possible, please, our board should get there by 6:20. And our next regular meeting will be February 13th in the library at 6:00 PM. Still do not have any teacher, staff, or community present besides us. Do we need an executive session tonight, Chris? No. So then we're on to good and welfare.
I'll go first. Let's say, what did I join last March? It's seven, not 40, and we're going to finish up, so I'm pumped about that. But I'm not super pumped. We're a week out from our first Lifetime Sports Day with a lot, a lot of effort from from the admin, from the teachers here, from volunteers, from from people. So it's going to be exciting. It's probably going to be really messy, but we got a pile of kids, a pile of adults that are all excited. So next Thursday should be exciting. Hopefully, we get some cold weather, so we get more snow, but a lot of excited kiddos to get out there and enjoy what Vermont and Rutland County has to offer. So I appreciate everybody's support of this and especially all the some of the teachers that have been working overtime, getting everything done, coordinating everything, and all your guys, the board support and the admin support. I'm excited.
I did all that. I I think everyone really pulled together and I appreciate all the extra work, especially considering all the extra work now with the PCBs and everything else that's added into it. So, thank you.
No, it was a great, great holiday. I think the kids were excited to kind of get back into a bit of a groove, these, you know, dark nights and things like that. Kind of good to get back into a into a bit of a routine, so.
Just kids, not you?
Ah, it was good for me, too. And seeing the kids back in their Rutland Chargers basketball gear was kind of kind of cool to see. It's a busy week of basketball this week, though, for sure, so. And, no, things are good, you know, into the second half, into the final stretch of the school year, you know, we're getting there, so.
I'd just like to thank the board for all the work on the budgets and stuff and the bond. This has been a tough decision to make, but I think we're headed in the right direction. And I'm looking forward to coming back to work driving bus here, pretty soon.
Great. And Colin, thank you for the extra work that you've been doing for Lifetime Sports and getting together a little packet for the meeting on the 16th. Really appreciate it. All right. Anybody else want to add anything else?
No, I'm just happy the kids are back to school. It's been nice. I like the early bedtime, you know?
I love them so much.
It's great to be humbled at 7:30 every single morning, you know, it just sets the tone.
And I'm thankful for hybrid meetings, because it enables everyone to be here even if they're not 100% feeling well. So thank you for joining, though some of you are not 100%. All right, so I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Jeff. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night, everyone.
Have a good night.
Feel well.